And good evening. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council Workshop for the City of Tawnytown for the month of March. We'll begin with our pledge. I'll ask Councilman Foster to lead us in that pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Happy International Women's Day to a majority of the council here, as well as those in the crowd as well. Before I do roll call, I do want to announce I have accepted the resignation of Councilman Hand. He is no longer eligible to serve on council due to moving out of the city of Tawnytown. I understand it is up to council to fill vacancies. I would like to suggest to them that with the election coming up, that seat being one up to be filled, that we simply leave it vacant for the time being. Mayor Protem, would you?
I think we would agree that that's probably the best course of action, since we only have two months.
Two months to go, yep. So there will be that seat left vacant for the next two months prior to the election. With that, let the record reflect that all members of council are present and accounted for. With the resignation of Councilor, former Councilman Hand, I do need to make some adjustments to liaison ships, requirement of us having a member of council on the planning commission. I'd like to appoint Mayor Protem Fuller to serve on planning commission. And then with that, for Parks and Rec, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Cheney if she would serve on Parks and Rec as our liaison. All right. All the rest will remain the same for the time being. After May, that's generally the time that we recirculate everybody as necessary. With that business out of the way, we're going to move into review of the minutes of the February 8th, February 13th regular meetings, as well as the February 22nd budget workshop. Are there any conversations to be had? Assuming you've all reviewed the minutes, everything seemed acceptable to me. All right. Hearing no discussion, those will be up for approval on Monday evening. I'll now ask members of the council if they have any conflicts of interest on agenda items this evening. No, sir. Okay. No one is conflicted, we'll move on. We now enter public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. If you'd like to speak this evening, we will adhere to the three-minute time limit, as well as the additional rules set forth prior to the meeting. So with that, anyone who'd like to speak, please step up, identify yourself and your city address.
How's it going? Christopher Miller, 107A Trevanian Road, Tawnytown, Maryland, 21787. The only thing I wanted to bring up today was I sent you all an email just in regards to the vacant police chief spot here in Tawnytown. My biggest thing is we're two months out from the election. You guys haven't filled it yet. I know you guys are planning to fill it. With two months out, I recommend that you guys don't, or I ask that you don't. I think it would help improve the cloud over here on City Hall. That's about all I got for you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll take this opportunity to inform the progress of that search that was started a couple of months ago now. We received applications for that position. We have begun interviews, have interviewed more than half of them. And at this point, it would be inappropriate to stop that process, especially to delay it for two months. So I appreciate the words. The intention is to bring forward a candidate at the April meeting to the council to approve. Any additional public comment on non-agenda items this evening? All right. Hearing nothing further. Up for introduction, we have ordinance 01-2023, the fiscal year 2023/2024 operating budget. And to go along with those, we're just going to discuss all three. Ordinance 02-2023 is the water sewer rate for fiscal year 23/24. And then also for introduction, ordinance 03-2023, the tax rate for fiscal year 23/24. Is there any discussion from council on these, which will be up for introduction? As a reminder, the water sewer rate is projected to remain the same as it has, and the tax rate is also projected to remain the same as it has for the past 10-plus years, probably.
Probably more like 16.
Probably more like 16 years. So it's nice to kind of hold, hold fast to that rate. Last chance for comments from the council. Any updates from staff on any of those topics?
No, the updated figures were circulated to everybody, and the draft budget is available on the website for public review.
Perfect. So our process going forward, this will be voted to introduce on Monday evening, and then next month, April, we will hold the public hearing for it at the workshop that will take place on April the 5th, 7:30 PM. We'll hold that public hearing, and projecting to adopt the budget on Monday, April 10th, following all of that. So that is coming into the final days of budget season for us. Everyone okay? You all look good and happy? Excellent. All right. Those will be up for your introduction on Monday evening. Up for adoption Monday evening, we have ordinance 04-2023, the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget amendment number two. Is that correct with the years? Because we haven't passed the budget, so we can't amend the budget.
It is, yeah.
All right. So typo, typo there. It should be fiscal year 2022, 2023, budget amendment number two. Any input from staff before I open it up for discussion?
We kind of hashed this out last month. If anybody has questions, I'll do my best to field them, but we're talking about some increased expenses, the lighting retrofit in the park. We talked about the new, the new for the crossarms because of having to replace the deteriorated ones that weren't originally in the budget. Also, we did, for one of the ponds that we cleaned out, we had to do stormwater as-built drawings because they were not on file from when the pond was originally done, so that's an additional expense. Those were offset by, we've actually received more interest on our state, on our accounts at the bank than budgeted, and we are going to take some money out of Park's, Park's fund balance to fund the lighting. So that's kind of the highlight on the general fund there.
Very good. Questions from council? Everyone's okay with that from last month? All right. That will be up for adoption on Monday evening. Madam Clerk, if you can just take a note to correct the years on that for Monday. Thank you. Next up for adoption Monday evening, we have resolution 2023-04. This is our monthly water allocation, this being for the month of March. I'll open up for discussion from the council. Anybody? I hear Joe Vigliotti in the back of my head. That's right. I was, I was heard it in the back of the head. Right? All right. Next, we have Mr. Weprick, your city manager report. What do you have for us this evening?
Okay. As far as the, the Quick Look Project stuff, just, let's see, we've been talking about Community Village a good bit lately. We've requested, or one of the developers who's interested in doing a community village for a parcel that's already been designated as such, is working with the designer and the draft revision to see what that would look like as we have those discussions about additional open space requirements in lieu of not requiring the alleys. So we really wanted to kind of go through an exercise and see what that would look like, and what the impact would be on a community, or prospective community. So, so that's ongoing. And no update. We talked a little bit about stormwater management last month, and I don't really have anything new on that one, as far as the A-storm regulations. I will be circulating to council a, a letter from the county to the state regarding some of the proposed A-storm changes for stormwater. Gets a little technical, but, but it kind of gives you an idea of what, what we're really looking at for that advancing stormwater resiliency in Maryland. That's what the A-storm stands for. As far as the Roberts Mill Road project goes, I'm sure most of you have seen that milling has occurred. The structures, manholes have been procured, so work is going to start on the sewer and storm drains at the bottom of Broad Street, and they're going to work their way up from that low point up the hill. And also, on the concurrent with that, is going to be the new storm drain in the segment of Roberts Mill Road between Baumgartner and Roth Avenue. So those, those are going to be happening, hopefully currently, and then we'll get a base coat on Roberts Mill for that portion, because that portion does not have water and sewer that we need to be working with. So it's, it's, it's good to see the construction actually happening, happening. We've talked about this project for many, many years, and it's good to see it finally moving forward. I did want to pass on, we got a very nice letter from Carol Vista thanking us for our Public Works Department did a presentation at Carol Vista regarding the infrastructure out there, because, you know, it, it's a unique scenario for the city where the city does not maintain the streets or the stormwater management facilities out there. So Public Works went out to, to help educate the board members and fielded a lot of questions about water and sewer, and it was, it was very much appreciated by the, the community out there. So we don't, don't get thanks very often, so I wanted to pass that on. And I did want to also respond to, we talked a couple of months ago about the complaints regarding the trash company. And just, just some quick highlights on that. We do 160,368 pickups a year, and we have had in the past year 152 complaints. Of those, nine were for broken cans. Six, 67 were for trash that was missed or not picked up. 19 were about throwing, or that, that used the word throw or threw, because we do get complaints that, you know, that the guys threw the can back towards my driveway or whatever. Five about trash being spilled on the street and not cleaned up. One that they took a can. Three about can placement, that is where they returned the can after they emptied it. One, let's see, 14 that they didn't completely empty the can. So the vast majority were for somebody that they missed somebody's trashcan or recycling. And in those cases, typically those are considered closed. We just tell the people, leave it out the next morning, and then Ecology Services circles back and picks it up the next morning. So that's, that's kind of, it, the ones I described don't total up to 152, but it gets us pretty close, because the, the tracking system at this point just gives free-form text field for what the complaint is. So we just kind of look for keywords for things that we frequently hear about. So going forward, we're going to try to have a little more consistency and try to use some keywords in there so that we can query it a little bit better. But I just wanted to share that with you, because it's kind of an ongoing discussion with the community about the service for trash pickup.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Jim.
And that's all I have, unless folks have questions for me.
The Community Village, has that gone back to planning commission yet, or are you looking to gather information before you go back to planning commission with that?
They have seen the same draft that you did, and we're, we're basically in agreement with it. And we're just trying to kind of nail down what that additional percentage of open space might, might be. I, I think after we've seen the result of how it was drafted initially, I don't want to basically repeat that and have this, this, you know, revised ordinance that we all think looks good, and then turns out to be unachievable because of the, the market here in Tawnytown.
Right. Okay.
But generally, that's, we're heading in that direction that we talked about a month or so ago.
Okay. Councilman Haynes, you got a question?
Yes, sir. So just one thing. Some interest has come up in locating a distillery here in town, potentially. And this prompted Director Mish to look into the Maryland Alcohol Manufacturing Promotion Fund. So he's going to apply for a considerable grant that would allow him to sub-grant to pertinent organizations in the city. He wants to submit this application idealistically by March 20th, but he can do it by April, depending on what we decide. It doesn't, the application doesn't require any sort of letters of support or anything like that, but we don't think it would hurt to strengthen the application with either a resolution from us, or just a letter from the mayor. So I just want to see what the appetite is for that.
I think with the timeline, let's, let's do a letter.
Okay.
Assuming, let's, let's poll council. How do we feel? Sounds good. I know we just amended the downtown zoning to allow meteries and such, so that would probably be very beneficial if we can provide, kind of pass-through grants from the state. Does that sound good to you, Mr. Weprick?
That does, yes. And this is, this is unfortunately one of those kind of last-minute things. It was just called to our attention this week.
Right.
And Mish kind of jumped on it and did a little homework, and it sounds like some of those purposes for the funding do apply for our situation.
I'd expect nothing less of the state than to do it last minute. If you can work with Director Mish and come up with some ideas, and we'll get that signed and sent out. Sounds excellent. Progress continues. Any other questions from Mr. Weprick on his report? Do you have any questions for him, maybe not related to his report? No? Okay. Any questions on departmental reports as they were presented to you?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to mention that I think that, like, Lorena and Randy Myers from Public Works need a shout-out for all of the grants that they've been also attacking too. So it's been wonderful to see all these grants getting done.
Yep. All the staff's done a phenomenal job of seeking grants and successfully getting a lot of them. Along with departmental reports, I do want to thank Kevin and Randy from Public Works for the job they did, not only at Carol Vista, but for our Water Sewer System 101 we did at the library. That was a very successful event with people coming out. The video is available online on YouTube, if you'd like to check that out. Lots of good information about how our water and sewer systems work, also some tips on how to identify leaks and hopefully get them repaired. That way you're not wasting water and paying us more money than necessary. All right. Anything additional before I move on? No? Okay. Into new business. Our first item is the monthly financial report. Are there any questions or concerns? Excuse me. We don't have legal report on the agenda, but we have Mr. Gallow satelliteing in from the great state of Florida. Do you have a legal report for us, sir?
I do. I want to give you good news. You always like good news, Mayor and council, that our Syrian land purchase for the bypass is finally on track to complete itself next week. It has been a long road, as you know. So here's how we end this. We end this almost the way we started. They'll, the deal between us and the Syrians will get transferred to the county. So the piece of property we're buying will be added to the piece of the property the county already owns along the corridor. There was, there was no traction for trying to get that piece to us, for whatever reason. They didn't say no, they didn't say yes. So in order to get this, we're already three months behind on our settlement time. In order to get this done, we're just going to do it, transfer it to the county. I've talked with the county attorney directly about how we're going to do it. And the good news is, they put it in our hands, so I can handle it to make it work. So I would say at the next meeting, I'll be able to tell you, it's done. And then I would imagine your job should be to go to the county and get them to give us the entire parcel, the composite parcel, back to the city. So that's good news. It's been a long time coming. If you have any questions about that or anything else, be happy to answer.
All right. Questions from council to the city attorney? All right, Mr. Gallow, you're off the hook. Thank you very much.
I'll talk to you later this evening.
Indeed you will. All right. Now, we're going to move into new business. We took a small bypass there. Monthly financial report. Any questions, comments, concerns from the council on that report this evening? All right. I don't hear any, so we're going to move into our accounts payables. Comments, questions, concerns, general inquiries, fits of rage, anything? All right. Next, we have exciting topic, Maryland Department of the Environment settlement offer. Mr. Weprick, would you like to open the floodgates on this one?
So as we discussed several months ago now, we have had violations at the wastewater treatment plant. They were highlighted in a letter from the Department of the Environment to us back in the fall. We responded advising them of the various projects that are in place to help us work towards compliance, mostly our INI reduction projects that are now being constructed. Also, our review of inventory of replacement parts that we can keep on the shelf without the parts going bad. Some parts need to be exercised periodically, and they can't just sit, or they will, like, bearings will flat-spot, or things will seize up over time if they're not used. So we've, we've worked to develop that inventory of things that we have, have on hand, so we can avoid extended downtimes while we would force to be ordered. We gave the department all this information. They responded recently with, "Thank you very much for all that information, but we still think that this is a situation that we could apply all these fines, but we're still willing to settle for $75,000. Please respond within 14 days, or the offer will be withdrawn," which is usually how the letters close. So we responded once again that you guys only meet once a month, and that we need to run this by Mayor and council before we can do any payments, but we are interested in settling. So we will need to have some conversations about our next steps. We were hoping that by demonstrating our progress and giving them an updated version of our compliance plan that we have been working with them on for many months now, that they would see we were making the progress and not feel it necessary to levy any penalties. But that turned out not to be the case. So here we are.
Here we are, indeed. I believe all of you saw the correspondence we received. Mr. Gallow, did you want to chime in on this topic? I see your camera magically turned on.
Well, I figure you, when you see me, you know I want to say something. That's probably better than being in person. Yeah, I just want to set the stage for what's kind of expected of you now versus later. As you see on your agenda, we're going to have a closed session for some legal advice. When the city manager talks about a settlement, it would be the settlement of a lawsuit, because if we wouldn't settle, the Department of Environment would file suit against the city and seek penalties and injunctions and things like that. And that's what we're trying to avoid. So we're going to split the discussion up tonight, so that in private, we can talk to you about the merits of the lawsuit, the, you know, the benefits. We obviously don't want to give our strategy so that the MDE can see it on TV, but we also want the public to be aware that this is dealing with a big financial request. And so we want you to have discussions about the dollar amounts, not necessarily whether we're going to settle it. We can talk about that after we talk about the legal details, but the dollar amounts and strategy. And the city manager can walk you through, you know, how we do it, an option, a number, that type of thing. But that's the purpose.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gallow. Discussion. Council knows we're going to have the closed session for the legal, so it's, how much do you want to say right now without? Understood. Anything additional?
It's, it's just really disappointing.
It is. Especially seeing, how do I put this publicly? Seeing other systems with far greater and much more far-reaching violations that are not being treated the same way.
Right.
We'll put it that way.
And the presentation of, of our compliance plan, it just feels like they're hearing us, but they're not listening.
Right. And we explain to them, first off, we have funded these vast improvements that are going to drastically improve the situation as they are. But the real downfall for us is, A, the massive rain events is a major issue. And we're not the only municipality that are dealing with this right now. I'd rather put any amount that they want to fine into the system to make improvements, not give them more money. That would be my greater intention here.
It just feels like, and I'm, I'm just going on a tangent, but it feels like if the goal of the MDE is to improve environmental quality, environmental protections, all of those things, then an arbitrary fine, instead of allowing us to reinvest that money, seems counterintuitive.
It does. It really does.
So I hope we can figure something out.
We'll keep working at it, but we'll, we'll discuss the legal ramifications later in the evening with everybody. Anything additional? The other, the other point to this is I'm reaching out to Senator Reedy to kind of get his, his assistance on working with MDE on this, kind of giving him a background. We've gathered up all of the correspondence we've had, that we've received, that we've had with them, and going to kind of work with him, hopefully to get a meeting with the secretary, which we've been asking for, for a number of years, to discuss in, in greater detail. But that is in progress now as we speak. Magic camera has appeared again. Mr. Gallow, did you have anything additional?
I can't stress enough how important that is, what the mayor is trying to do with the senator. I deal with lots of clients that have these issues, my other client towns. And this is hardly ever resolved in court, and it's always sort of mediated by an elected official who has a good relationship with the mayor and council of the town. So you can't expect the senator's going to wave a wand and make things happen, but he's the guy that's going to open the doors for you to go through. And, you know, Mayor, you really need to follow up with that and make that happen, because I know you're on the Legislative Committee in Annapolis, and you see him down there, but that's the timely part that will get this really done.
You got it. So those are the steps I'm working now as we speak, and we'll continue down this path. Try to make it as smooth and not rocky as we can. All right. Everyone good? Conversation to continue. On Monday evening, I'm going to ask for your approval of some nominations for boards. As we have an election coming up on May the 1st, it's time to renew election board. We have three members who are willing to return. They are Sue Billings, Bill Kennedy, Judy Ferbay, and then Barb Pedelbridle has agreed to return to the elections board and serve. With your approval Monday evening, that'll bring us up to a four-person board. There is still one vacancy that I'm willing to entertain. If there are any thoughts, opinions, names, anything of that like, I'm happy to entertain it. Any questions, discussion about that, before I move to the next one? I'm moving to the next one. I'm also going to put forward Monday evening, a name for the Ethics Commission, and that is Mr. David Bowie. He's interested in serving on the Ethics Board. I think he'll do a great job. He's a very analytical person. That's definitely something that's needed on that board. Questions about that one? Everyone's feeling good? Excellent. All right. Those will be up for your approval on Monday evening. Lastly, we have been contacted by Commissioner Vigliotti, the work that he's been doing with the county about getting our bypass plans back onto the county transportation letter. Councilman Haynes has done a great job of drafting a letter on behalf of the city that I've reviewed. We worked together to finish that up, and we are looking to submit that to the county. Is there any discussion? Was the letter circulated to everybody?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. If we can circulate that prior to Monday evening, so everyone can see what we're asking for, what we're laying out in the letter, are the steps that we've taken in the past several years, especially the past four years, we've made the biggest advances on that, discussing the negotiations we're having ongoing, as well as things like the Syrian property and the like. So it's, definitely is out of case of the work that we've done. Now we just need to rely on the county to get it added to that list that was taken away from us several years ago. Councilman Haynes, you kind of spearheaded this one, so can you speak a little bit to it?
Yeah. Initially, I thought we might do a resolution, but it seems like consensus is all we need to do. But just an overview, the letter, the contents of the letter, and I'll, I'll circulate, because we wanted to get a final draft signed off and everything. So if you guys have any edits or changes that you'd like to make, but it just gives an overview, brief history of the bypass, again, what we've done so far to make progress towards it. From what I understand, Commissioner Vigliotti needs to have this by April 1st, so that's why we got to get it out the door on Monday.
Kudos to the commissioner. He's managed to do in three months what no previous commissioner was willing to do, which is get a discussion going on our behalf. So much appreciated to him. He's not here for me to wave to or shake his hand, but he's in my thoughts. Any additional conversation? All right. That letter will be circulated to members of council.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll make final decision Monday evening to get that signed and And then we'll make final decision Monday evening to get that signed and sent away. If there's nothing additional, we're going to open up the floor yet again to public comment for agenda items. Anything we've talked about this evening that appeared on this piece of paper in front of you? Or the additional things that I threw on there? You're welcome to come up and speak to. Same rules apply. Identify yourself, identify your address. I'll give you three minutes and all the other wonderful rules that were posted prior to. Opportunity is open. All right. Hearing none. We will be adjourning, but before we do, I get to read a statement. "In accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act Title 10, Governmental Procedures, Subtitle 5, Meetings, Section 3-305B, this meeting will be closed as closed only to consult with council to obtain legal advice. Listing of topics to be discussed and the authority of which citing 3-305B7, topic being MDE enforcement. Reason for the session to obtain legal advice relating to the Maryland Department of the Environment Enforcement actions." I'll ask, Mr. Gallow, does that satisfy the reading of the statement for the closed session?
It does. Now you can take your vote.
Very good. I will be seeking a motion to adjourn the open meeting and reconvene in closed session. May I have a second to that? All right. All in favor of adjourning the open meeting and reconvening in closed session, after which we will not be reconvening in open session? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, we will take a 10-minute recess for the gallery to clear. We will begin our closed meeting at 8:12 PM. Thank you, everybody.